Okay Commissioners, the next item is item number 12. Application for Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan. Document number 162966. This is 361 Central Park West, AKA 1 West 96th Street. An individual landmark, the First Church of Christ Scientists of New York City. A Bozars classical-style church designed by Carrion Hastings, built between 1899 and 1903. Application is to construct a rooftop addition and install rooftop mechanical equipment, create, enlarge, and replace windows, remove stained glass windows, install lighting, security cameras, and security deterrence. This is Zoned R10-A.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Sammy Chuck with Rachel Staff. 361 Central Park West is an individual landmark located in northwest corner of Central Park West and West 96th Street. Here's the existing image and here's the proposed. There are several components to the proposal, including at the roof, the construction of an addition and an annex, the installation of mechanical equipment, and the physical screen and bulkhead, the creation of window openings and the replacement of windows, including stained glass windows throughout the whole building, the creation of interior floor slabs, installation of lighting, birddening, security cameras, and security spikes. At the steeple, the replacement of doors and wood lattice screens, and installation of the green wall at the main entrance on West 96th Street. Howard Sipser will be the first person to speak.
I'm Chair of Members of the Commission. My name is Howard Sipser. I'm a partner in the law firm, the Akerman Law Firm, on 666. The family and we appear here on behalf of the owners. And I just want to introduce staff that I have with me. Nisha Hunter-Burkett, who is our preservation consultant, and the firm of Lee Saltzman. Richard Kronic, who is the architect of record with the firm of GKV. And Mary Kirkland-Higgins, who's our stained glass consultant. We're going to be brief. We've done tremendous amount of work on this building for the last ten months. This is an adaptive reuse of the individual landmark for strictly residential purposes, which will reinforce the residential quality of the neighborhood. If and when we receive approval from your commission, you will be required to go to the New York City Board of Stormy and Appeals, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And that, at that agency, you'll be required to have a waiver for a zoning lot, a zoning waiver for near and side yards in order to preserve the original footprint of the building. We'll also have some waivers regarding the multiple drilling law for some of our proposed windows and existing openings, which will be slightly or clearly below multiple drilling law standards. And there's a precedent to waiving those on other applications. Anyway, we're very excited about this. We worked very hard. Our community outreach was extraordinary. We worked and met with all the neighbors. We met with elected officials. We met on a number of occasions with the community board, who have been terrifically helpful. And I'm proud to announce that the community board approved us, a vote of 33 to 3, with one abstention and two extensions for cause. And with that, I'd like to turn the podium over to Nisha Hunter-Burkett.
Good afternoon Commissioners, this is Nisha Burkett with Saltzman Architects. I'm going to try to be quick and keep to the time. Again, we're honored to be here before you today. There is a project intent, which I'd like to summarize, I think, here, to retain as much historic fabric as possible, to maintain as many historic window openings as possible, to introduce the most significant changes on the least visible façades, the north and the west, and to balance the respect for the landmark with the sensitive modifications and upgrades needed to address the function and code requirements of proposed residential use. We know the landmarks doesn't have jurisdiction overuse, but it is a component of the project. The scope of the work can fall into five distinct categories. The first, facade restoration, to address many years of deferred maintenance and water infiltration. Two, a three foot ten vertical extension of the copper and glass skylight at the roof, changes to masonry window and door openings. Four, alterations to stained glass windows, including the reuse of nonreligious stained glass elements. And five, new bronze and wood windows. Historic views of 1904 showing Central Park West and West 96th Street. Typical deteriorating conditions of the building due to the deferred maintenance. LSA has prepared a conditions report with prioritized recommendations for treatment, which we understand will be reviewed and approved at staff level. Suffice to say, the highlights include new Budovici tile, clay roofs, copper, cornice restoration, granite repairs, repointing, facade cleaning, and granite, sorry, and bulk repairs.
How long has the building been vacant?
It was occupied by the first congregation from 1903 until 2004, and then Crenshaw Christian Center from 2004 to 2014 summer. And the building changed hands. The summer is currently vacant.
Okay, thank you.
Aerial photograph with arrows indicating the views of the mock-up as well as renderings. The intent of the renderings and mock-up views would be to show what is visible from the public way. You'll notice views would be from West 96th Street, from Central Park West, north of the site, Central Park West, south of the site, as well as within the park. First view, view from across the street, West 96th Street, Central Park West, looking northwest. On the roof level, the three foot ten vertical extension of the copper and glass skylight. Also, 12 new masonry openings on these two elevations and one modified masonry opening. So, three new openings here, three new openings here, new here and here, new here and here, as well as here, a modified opening here and a new one here. I'll show you more in detail in elevation. Mock-up on the left, render on the right, the same view. Second view, Central Park West, south of the site, looking northwest. The white box on the roof is actually not on the church, it's on the building on West 97th Street on the north side of 97th. Here you see the copper and glass skylight, vertical extension, also six new skylights coming to the main roof, a horizontal connector linking the penthouse with the lantern and tower. And over here, we have two components of the stair and elevator bulkhead. Same view with the mock-up on the left, the render on the right. Third view, from Central Park West, looking west through the alley located between 361 and 371 Central Park West. There is a fence and gate existing, and you would be viewing this north elevation of the church through that fence and gate. The proposed alterations to the north elevation would be obliquely visible through that fence and gate. Also, the changes to new masonry openings here on the primary facade, as I mentioned, here, here, as well as a new window on the north elevation. Same view with the mock-up, no visibility of rooftop elements from this particular vantage point. View number four, from West 96th Street, looking directly north. Here we have the current vehicular access with the garage. The proposed would be a pedestrian access, reutilizing the former garage structure as an access point to the building. Alteration that's most noticeable here is the window at Pavilion that would be removed and a new window installed, matching the condition on Central Park West, and a new window below. You can notice a portion of the raised copper and glass skylight here, the uppermost portion of the elevator and stair bulkhead, and also the portion of the acoustical enclosure for the mechanical equipment. You'll also note that there will be a number of changes to fenestration, new masonry openings on the west elevation. I'll show that in elevation in a moment. Same view with mock-up and the render. View number five, taken from Central Park West, again, looking northwest with the vertical extension of the copper and glass skylight. Same view with the mock-up and render. View number six, taken from Central Park West, looking southwest. So here we have the visibility of the horizontal connector that would link the penthouse with the tower. Same view, mock-up and render. Seventh view, West 96th Street, looking northeast. So again, the view of the existing condition, proposed. Raised skylight here, elevator and stair bulkhead, top of a flue on top of the elevator and stair bulkhead for the core. This one would serve the penthouse. This is the acoustical enclosure for the mechanical equipment. Mock-up, render, same view. East elevation, I'm going to start from the ground up. Three former entrances to the church consisting of circassian walnut, wood doors, outer doors, and then circassian walnut and glass inner doors. The outer doors would be restored, and in the proposed use, they'll serve as shutters. The inner doors, I'll show you a planned section shortly, those doors would be restored and retrofitted where the fixed glass panels would be made operable to provide light and air for the residential occupants. Directly above, oh, not sure, okay, good. Directly above, the segmentally arched stained glass window here, east facing, will be removed. This window will be salvaged, and either a private or institutional collector is being sought. You can see in the two pavilions, the existing monumental windows will be retrofitted, so the stained glass perimeter condition, which is not religious, will be salvaged and introduced into new IGUs in the bronze windows here and here. New bronze windows will be located in the nondecorative granite masonry directly below. You can see four historic bronze windows flanking the central recessed entrance. In the proposed condition, six new windows would be inserted into the masonry with new bronze windows, the detailing of which would be simplified to distinguish those from the historic bronze windows. And those would also have IGUs as well. Directly above, the three bronze windows in the historic condition would be retrofitted with new IGUs. Two new masonry openings would be installed just below the cornice line, and the horizontal dimension and vertical alignment would match the windows below. Directly above that, we have five window openings with a combination of casement and one-over-one windows. The proposed condition consists of wood casement windows matching the configuration, operation, details, and finish of the historic windows. At the tower, at three typical conditions on the south, east, and north, the metal, polycarbonate doors would be removed, new wood and glass doors would be inserted in the masonry openings. At the level of the tower, just above, the wood screen, historic wood screen, which is severely deteriorated, would be replicated, but with a thinner profile, so matching the historic condition and finish, but introducing new IGU behind with operable and fixed glass panels. And again, that's for four elevations, typical. And lastly, at the steeple, the existing masonry opening would be fitted with new louvers finished to match the historic windows. That's typical for four elevations. You'll also note here, this is the northeastmost corner of the proposed elevator and stair bulkhead at the roof. The West 96th Street elevation, again, starting from the ground up, the proposed door, sorry, the existing door that exists on West 96th Street, treatment would be the same as is proposed for Central Park West. The garage structure here would be reused, again, with pedestrian access, but the roll-down door, which is not historic, would be removed, and again, providing the access to the building. Skylights would be replaced above the structure. Three monumental round-headed windows here, which feature religious and nonreligious stained glass. And I'll show you details and elevations in a moment. Suffice to say that the nonreligious stained glass is restricted to the border condition or perimeter condition. That would be salvaged and reintroduced into the new IGUs with bronze windows and fixed and operable panels corresponding with the new residential units inside. Here at Pavilion, the existing bronze window would be removed, the masonry opening enlarged, new bronze window inserted, and that condition would replicate the existing conditions on Central Park West. Again, a new bronze window located immediately below. At the fourth floor, the existing pent roof would be removed, and a new open patio would be created that would not be visible from the public way. I'll show you that in better detail in section. Above, at the main roof level, six new skylights are proposed. The copper and glass skylight, which would be fabricated new to match the condition of the historic, raised three foot ten. The horizontal connector or link clad in glass and zinc, linking the penthouse level with the tower. Immediately behind would be the elevator and stair bulkhead serving the penthouse level to the left, the elevator and stair bulkhead serving the main core. Here, the zinc, matte zinc clad with louver detail, acoustical screen, and the two custom chillers that would be located beyond, that would be located at the west. And I should say, one new window located here with the dimensions and horizontal alignment matching the windows immediately to the left. The west elevation, from the ground up, modifications to masonry openings here and here at the first level to introduce new windows. 12 new masonry openings and new casement and transom windows, and the fenestration of the existing windows above, and all to finish to match the historic condition. At the Pavilion, the same condition as the treatment on West 96th Street and Central Park West. Here, you're looking inside the former garage, so looking at the zinc and glass cladding, replacement skylights here, so this would be the main and the service entrances respectively. Here, at the fourth level, the pent roof would be removed, and a new flat roof would be installed for a patio and railings here at this location. Above, this is the west elevation of the zinc acoustical screen, louvered acoustical screen and mechanical equipment, chillers beyond, the elevator and stair bulkhead here, and the raised copper and glass skylight beyond. It's the existing chimney to remain. The north elevation, again, from the ground up, we have existing conditions here and then below break conditions viewed through that fence and gate that I mentioned and showed photographs of earlier. We have groupings of single, paired, and groups of three windows. The proposed condition would be three groups of four casement windows. Also, at the west portion of the building, we have replacement of windows and existing openings, ceiling of one opening, introduction of three new window openings here. Also, a new masonry opening for a gate to access the service, just for maintenance and service, access to the rear. At the pent roof at the fourth floor, skylight, glazed skylight. Here, we're introducing, proposed to introduce, four ribbon vertical windows, simply detailed, featuring clear and spandrel glass. The same treatment as at West 96th Street would be also the same here for the north elevation for the round-headed monumental stained glass windows. However, on these windows, three new bronze windows would be proposed underneath them. Above, yeah, keep going, above, one new window. Here at this level, dimensions and horizontal alignment to match the windows to the right. Here at the main roof, a new dormer, zinc clad dormer. Here's the copper and glass skylight, the horizontal connector, elevator and stair bulkhead with two flues, and the acoustical enclosure for the custom chiller units.
Are you removing... Sorry. Are you removing the roof on the western side?
On the western side.
I'm sorry, go back to the, I guess it's the northern elevation, and see, all the way towards the west, there's a, at the lower level...
There, right here?
Yes, right.
Yes. You can actually see also here, this pent roof would be removed to create a new flat roof with a balcony terrace and railings. So that same condition here is here.
Okay.
In section, the red indicates the historic with the former auditorium, at-grade access auditorium and choir loft here, and then the former reading rooms and treatment rooms and offices associated with the church, the copper and glass skylight here. The black indicates the proposed floor slabs. Here we have a north-south section, again, with red indicating choir lofts, volume of the former auditorium, the proposed outdoor patio at the fourth floor here on West 96th Street, not visible from the public way. The former reading rooms, treatment rooms, and offices here, and the proposed volume in black with the floor slabs, and you can see very distinctly the three foot ten vertical extension of the skylight. The roof plan, most critical is the red hatch rectangular zone here, which is located 100 feet from the Central Park West elevation. Within this zone, no mechanical equipment, bulkheads can be located as required by zoning. So the footprint of the proposed mechanical enclosure, the two custom 145-ton chiller units located here with dunage 10 feet maximum, and the acoustical enclosure is proposed to be 11 feet. The location of the elevator and stair bulkheads, also trying to be as respectful as possible of the footprint of the raised skylight. These, both the mechanical equipment and the skylights were pushed as far back from West 96th Street in order to minimize the visibility from the public way. Just also to point out the dormer on the north elevation, which I showed in elevation, and the new skylights on West 96th. Floor plan, main access point to the building, pedestrian access, where the main entrance and the service entrance. Typical window conditions, bronze, round bronze windows, rectangular bronze windows to be retrofitted, new IGUs. The circassian walnut doors that I spoke of, the outer doors and the inner doors. The inner doors would be restored and retrofitted with these clear glass panels made operable. You can see in section, the outer doors serving the shutters, the inner doors to provide light and ventilation for the residential units. The wood screen detail, again, with the proposed IGU behind fixed and operable panels because this tower will be made as occupied space. This is a typical condition of the monumental round-headed window facing West 96th Street. So we have outdoor view, exterior view, as well as two interior views. The interior view, you can see quite clearly, the religious stained glass medallion in the upper portion of the window, as well as the foliated, nonreligious stained glass border condition. You can also see in the historic condition, a wood bench that abutted the window. So you can see a view from the former auditorium looking up to the choir loft. And in elevation, so the zone, approximate zone of the former bench, historic bench, the religious medallion, stained glass medallion, and border condition, and the proposed new bronze windows with the salvaged and reused stained glass, nonreligious border. And the medallions would be salvaged and hopefully a private or institutional collector could be found. The section illustrating the historic condition with the bench abutting the window and the proposed floor slabs, and I'll show you a more detailed section. The effort was made to meet acoustical, fire rating, and structural requirements and to minimize the visibility of the proposed floor slabs as they meet the windows. There's a detail of that floor slab condition. Typical condition views of the north elevation, again, seen through this fence and gate on Central Park West. Typical view of the round-headed monumental windows, a view from above looking down at the circular windows here. Typical views through the alley of the condition of 361, and then also the fire escapes of 371. Here's a typical elevation of the north elevation, monumental round-headed windows. Again, the rusticated masonry and frame would be preserved, same treatment as at West 96th. However, a new bronze window would be inserted below. This is our section, again, the same section except for the proposed bronze window below. For the Pavilion windows, these rectangular windows on the nonreligious foliated border condition would be salvaged and introduced into the new IGUs for the bronze windows in the historic masonry openings. The nondecorative granite masonry below removed, and new horizontal bronze windows would be inserted at these locations of the pavilions. This is the stained glass window east facing that I spoke about. The designation report does speak to John Lafarge. We have discovered with research that in fact, the attribution has no foundation, no substantiation. The catalog raised in the eye for Lafarge does not include this window, and also all contract documents and press clippings and accounting ledgers for the church do not reference Lafarge. This window would be removed, salvaged, and a private or institutional collector found. New bronze window with new insulated clear glass inserted in the historic masonry opening. Detail, plan, elevation, and section of the proposed access point from West 96th Street. New granite paving, the new green wall, this would be self-supporting, and it would not attach to the neighboring building immediately to the west, Southern West 96th Street, nor would it conceal any windows on Southern West. The new skylights, the new infill inside the former garage structure. Lighting, recessed uplights in the former steps accessing the doors on Central Park West and West 96th Street. Also concealed lighting inside the former garage here, also below the sills of the windows here, and uplighting at the Pavilion level, first floor only. On the north elevation, below the level of the sills. Security cameras, 11 are proposed, four typical details. At the former entrances, they would be recessed into the soffits, replacing... At the former entrances, they would be recessed into the soffits, replacing current non-historic light fixtures, all with concealed conduit. Also within the former structure of the garage, and at the return of the pavilions. And located within the subgrade areaway on West 96th. Proposed spikes at the locations of the stairs to discourage sitting and sleeping on these Materials, we have a materials board, but calling out the glass, ceramic fridged glass at the entrance, the walkway material of West 96th, the historic paint finish, the staining finish for the circassian walnut doors, the proposal of the sheet tile, and the window glass. Copper roof material, this is the acoustic enclosure material, lubored zinc with a matte finish, window million, which would be bronze, and zinc panels for the elevator and stair bulkheads, as well as that horizontal connector and the green wall. Thank you.
Yes, Michael?
Do you have any details of the elevation of the proposed rooftop skylight, its vertical extension? I've only seen it in small scale. Your photographs of the existing detail on O02 show a fairly elaborate, freeze kind of clear story condition there. Can you give us any sense of the detail of what you're proposing for that, for this whole new additional roof?
Yes, just a moment.
Great.
So, this is a little bit misleading. The existing condition was actually the result of many years of tarring and painting of the former copper and glass skylight. So you actually do not read the glass, it is not legible, on the slope portions of the skylight. What you are reading is tar and green paint. There are both operable and fixed windows, bronze, sorry, copper windows on the sides. Again, every effort was made to try to salvage this copper and glass skylight and to try to raise that on a glass and copper base. However, it was found that this condition is too deteriorated, and so the plan is to replicate it to match the historic.
So you're going to have that kind of Roman grill type thing, ban?
Yes.
And then you're going to have a skylight roof that's not copper, but that's glass with copper muttons above it, that replicates that condition. What's below?
Yeah, let me show you the elevation.
I see it in the small scale, is there any blowups that show, is there any detail to it, or is it basically just a series of copper?
At this point.
At this point, we're still in the schematic design, and we haven't developed it to a level of construction documents.
Does it look pretty good?
Sure. This one here, okay. So just to be very clear, what we see is just the vertical edge of the copper and glass skylight in the existing condition. In the proposed condition, which I indicated, three foot ten vertical extension, so that would consist of a copper base and then glazed panels at the perimeter, and then the recreated copper and glass skylight with operable and fixed panels, replicating the historic condition, raised on top. We haven't developed the details to the level of CDs at this point.
And just as a follow-up on that, if I could, is, does, do the other skylights, which are on the roof itself, on the hip of the roof, do they serve the same interior spaces as the vertical skylight, the transom skylight?
So these skylights, would they serve the same? Okay. I should say that at this point, the interior is still being worked out. As you can imagine, the effort here is to try to focus on the exterior being appropriate, and the interior's not been fully fleshed. But my understanding is that this copper and glass skylight would serve two separate units. And these...
This is the amateur crime. This is, this is the seventh floor, which is the penthouse level, and this would be the sixth floor. We have no ability to bring light into the units within this piece, within the roof structure itself, without dramatically affecting the building. So what we chose to do in these locations, the six locations, was introduce a skylight that would provide light and air into the habitable space on the inside.
And the windows below those are what you're calling fifth floor?
Here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's another, there's a slab somewhere in here, and if we look at the section of the, here. If you look at the elevator, I don't know how good this is, but this is, I think it looks like two floors. This here, this is the sixth floor here, that picks up those existing windows here. Okay, this is the slab of the sixth floor. This here is the seventh floor. And then this piece here, the elevator, the three foot ten elevation, is actually a duplex to this apartment here.
Ah, so it is the same unit?
There's two units on this floor, one on the north side, one on the south side. The one on the north side is a simplex, the one on the south side is a duplex with this.
I think the question, I mean, I suspect, is that, that you've put these skylights within the hip roof, and are they absolutely necessary in order to light the spaces below if in fact there's other lighting, including the clear story lighting that you're putting just sort of next to that?
But if this, if you see here, which is the zone we're addressing right now, there is no fenestration there whatsoever, so it is necessary to bring light into that area. We're trying to provide nominal 10-foot finished ceiling heights.
Okay, and I think, just to add to, I think what Adi may have been referring to, is because you said it's a duplex, it's a unit, right?
Yes.
That sometimes when you have...
Right now, that's what's proposed.
Okay, that's what's proposed, but sometimes when you have duplex units, you have double height spaces, and so that was the question. So basically, you, to need, I guess it's the sixth floor, you have to put in these windows.
That is correct. Sorry if I didn't answer.
It's still not...
Where's the section?
Yeah.
This one, or the Rio one?
That's good, actually, the other, I'm here. Okay. This one is helpful, right.
So the area that we were just speaking about was here.
This here, this is the south side here.
Sorry, the south side.
And this is where we're inserting those skylights that you see in the elevation and from the rendering.
Right. Right, and then the other windows are just above that, right?
This is, this is the line of the existing roof, and this is the three foot ten elevation of it.
The question we're having is...
I'm sorry?
You're raising it by five feet?
No, three foot ten.
Three feet ten.
Three foot ten, vertical extension.
On the same light and air question, one of the most visible...
It sounded like he had two floors here.
Six new windows, and then on the fourth, two, three, and four on the Central Park West facade.
On the east facade, right.
Correct. The plans don't indicate what spaces go behind that, what spaces go behind that?
We've done several iterations of that, and we, at this point, don't even know, to be quite candid. And we've looked at doing it different ways. There were bathrooms, there were living rooms, there was a dining area, there was all kinds of different things. So at this point, it is a flux.
So knowing that this is an individual landmark and all that stuff, why would, why should we, as a commission, consider approving that kind of modification if there is no statement of necessity?
This you can understand if it's okay.
Help me understand why that would be okay.
When we began to develop, initially when we developed the plans, we were looking to bring as much light and air as we can reasonably bring into the building. We looked to another Carrera and Hastings building, which is in New York Public Library, and on the west facade, there is a similar condition, and we have some images that we can show you, of how they handle this type of condition. So we can pass these around, but...
Did they?
That's a building that some might recall.
Okay. So that, they're here for, should we pass them around? Do people want to have them?
Sure.
We can do that. And so that was, that historical precedent was what we used to introduce this possibility of these new windows.
But I'm looking at some of the floor plans, and maybe they are in flux, but it seems they vary. So in some cases, in the proposed sixth floor, you have the master bedrooms, but you do have windows coming from the other two sides.
Yes. If you look at the size, I'm sorry, if you look at the size of these windows, those are the small square windows, which are these guys from Freeze? Exactly, right in here. So again, we were trying to increase...
So if, to put that in my own, to read what you're saying...
Yeah, so Michael, ask it to go to 300, because it's so just section.
So you're just saying that as of this moment, we should really look at not, maybe not only those windows, but other windows as well, as kind of, worst case, I'm still figuring out the interior, so I'm trying to make the most of it, kind of?
But you're now way under, and they're going to go to BSA to get approvals, so they're trying to get windows anywhere.
Right.
But I think, if I may...
Look at 300 for a second?
Yep.
Just to address exactly, just to take, right now, it seems that you have two levels, sort of hitting the front rather than three, where you're proposing windows. So you're proposing three extra windows in that...
And one of them's behind the entrance, the second floor, which backs up to the main entrance, which is a big chunk of gray.
Right, that would make it four.
But to the left and right, there's windows, then the floor above, then the floor above. And the floor above that already has one.
You can actually hear...
Yeah, so...
It's three. Second, third, and fourth.
Second, third, fourth.
This is here, here, and here, and if you pull it through to here, 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 it's three levels.
What's a big chunk of gray?
If I may, I would like to say that every effort has been made to try to respect the solidity and the monumentality of this building, and particularly on the West 96th and Central Park West elevations, and keep as much of a concentration of new punched openings, new ribbon windows on the west and the north elevations, trying to keep them as minimally or not visible as possible from the public way. I think these windows that we're speaking about, these six new windows flanking the recessed entrance, are very small, and trying to maintain the same dimensions and the vertical alignment of the historic windows above and below, they would not meet the required light and air because of the small size of these windows.
So why do it?
The effort is to try to introduce some new windows because the ecclesiastical use for the sanctuary at this level didn't require windows, but the residential use will require some windows. And again, we're not trying to ask for large, but just very small and discreet if we can.
Okay. Diana, I know that you wanted to ask a question, and then Roberta.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the penthouse for a minute.
Which drawing would you like to see?
I'm sorry?
Which drawing would you like to refer to?
The one that we were at, I guess before, with the, it shows also the volume below it.
The section.
Yeah, sorry.
That's one of the sections.
So almost anything would do.
Okay.
I just wanted to see, what's the, you were talking earlier, it sounded like you had two floors of penthouse, perhaps I was confused at the moment, but you've got a, the floor that's got the series of windows that goes across the roof, I mean, the large area that's the clear story, yeah, the skylights, excuse me. And above that, how tall is the, is the penthouse structure above that, is what I was trying to get to?
The existing structure that exists today is elevated three foot ten inches. It will render you eight if you go through the other section.
Yeah, okay. So you're saying it's...
What happens here is, at this point, we get, I believe it's eight feet right here, which is our minimal height.
Right.
To create habitable space, and then we have this, we were storing, replicating the skylight here, that will elevate it to approximately 10 feet at the peak.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I thought I understood it, but I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Roberta?
Where are the stained glass windows that you're removing? How many, again, just say how many, and just show where they fall?
Sure. So the east-facing stained glass window on Central Park West would be removed in its entirety, and either an institutional or private collector is being sought for that, as well as for the six religious medallion stained glass windows in the monumental round-headed windows on Central Park, sorry, on West 96th and the north elevation. The non-religious stained glass components, which consist of foliated borders at the pavilion windows, and then also at these round-headed monumental windows, those would be salvaged and reintegrated into the new IGUs. And we have Mary Clerk in Higgins, our stained glass consultant, if you have any additional questions on the stained glass.
So that'll be, that'll remain, right?
Yes.
It'll be taken out but put back into the windows?
Correct.
It's only the religious stained glass windows which are going to be taken off-site and given to collection.
And a follow-up question, so where do those fall? Do they fall in bedrooms, living rooms, and things? And is there no way to block, is there no system for blocking those from the inside? If the, if the reason is that you don't want, I mean, tenants or whoever's there don't want to see them, is there nothing that can be put on in the inside, another kind of glass or something, so that...
I appreciate your concern, and I should say that the team has tried to think about different ways in which to maintain more of the stained glass, religious stained glass. However, from an operability standpoint, because we're dealing with fixed and operable panels, we're dealing with different floor slab levels, separate residential units. So where these windows fall are going to be broken into several, correspond with several different interior residential units, rather than a single auditorium as they were historically. I should say too, that the Landmarks Commission has previously approved, on three occasions that I'm aware of, the removal of religious stained glass windows. The example that I'm thinking of most prominently is St. Peter's at Hickson Warren, where the non-religious stained glass was salvaged and retained and used in the windows, but the religious components were removed.
Can I just ask on that religious components thing?
Yes.
I, I thought that the Christian Science Church was pretty non-iconic. Is there anything here that is really kind of, what's religious?
Okay, so just to be very, very clear, so this is a view of the inside of one of the six round-headed monumental windows. This one is on West 96th Street. So on the interior view, we see the religious element, and the focus can be anything from the Virgin Mary to Daniel in the Lion's Den, to Christ holding the sheep. There are many different themes, very overt religious themes. We thought that a good and logical and rational demarcation would be to separate the religious medallions and really retain those in, as a whole. We certainly considered the removal of just the religious element and then maintaining the non-religious surround of the medallion. But we believe that that would be awkward and unresolved, and then also that it would reduce natural light coming into the apartments, and that the original design intent was for them to be seen together. So the effort has been to focus on the salvage and retention of the non-religious foliated borders. And we are working with Horace Bronze, a very, a very good bronze window manufacturer, on the detailing of this proposed condition.
One of the things, Nisha, is, for instance, in this piece here, that this floral piece actually integrates with the border itself, we will be maintaining this piece as it comes out. We will then re, not redesign it, but rework it into the new fenestration, but introduce new lead caning throughout this piece that will house it into the new window system. So this piece here will be complete with this piece.
All right, are there any other questions for now? Because otherwise we can take testimony? Okay. We may call you back. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. The committee found this proposal to be a cruel treatment of an individual landmark, particularly the removal of stained glass windows. This building is clearly a church. One imagines that prospective tenants will be attracted to it because of its former life as a house of worship. Therefore, retaining original elements would only add to its value and marketability as a unique residence. There's a national decline in religious congregations and a growing number of residential church conversions in New York. While HDC welcomes adaptive reuse, reversibility and sensitivity must be guiding factors in design. Arbitrarily cutting window openings into a building described in its designation as being, quote, "the finest tradition of Bozar classes..." being, quote, "the finest tradition of Bozart classicism," end quote, will be permanently damaging to this landmark. Thank you.
Sorry, the next speaker is Christabel Goff. And after that, David Rosten.
Christabel Goff, for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Religious properties have been difficult for preservation from the first. The important thing to note here is that this building is no longer, in the words of the law, twenty-five, three oh three, utilized as a place of religious worship. If it were, the interior could not be designated. Since it has been sold for development, it is hard to understand why the commission did not immediately move to landmark the superb interior, and it might possibly still be an option, depending on the amount of demolition that has been done already, I Even if the commission intends to regulate only the exterior, it is certainly not bound to base its approvals on the requirements of this destructive interior configuration, which must be adjusted to be less harmful to the magnificent exterior shell, even if the owner is determined to destroy the irreplaceable asset of the richly decorated auditorium and other meeting rooms. Though it is no longer a church, its preservation requires that it should retain the form and outline of a church, the church that Carrer and Hastings designed. The rooftop addition is absolutely unacceptable, both the additions and the subtractions. Loss of stained glass is unacceptable. Cutting into stone planes of the Central Park West facade to add and expand windows is unacceptable, those planes were an important part of the design. The south facade should also be preserved. Other adapters of religious buildings have found ways to insert residential spaces without doing so much violence to their properties. They have been able to incorporate original features to create unique spaces for living. This proposal should be completely rethought. I would like to distribute a letter from Charles Warren, the author of the recent monograph on Carrer and Hastings, and I'm going to read just one line for it, I think I can. "The proposed additional story and increased light is an awkward change to the massing of the building, one that alters its profile and weakens its connection to both ecclesiastical building traditions and the clarity of its Bozart style composition. Those changes are not necessary." And may I distribute the whole letter to the commissioners because it's late.
Yes, you can give it to our staff. David Rosten?
I live near the church, but my concerns about architectural beauty in the, in the city of the past go back to when I was at Columbia, and worked nights as a reporter at the Daily News, all my stories, story ideas even then were about old New York. I see here, perhaps erroneously, a sort of willing disbelief that the Landmarks Preservation Commission is solely focused on aesthetics, like the view from the public way. Reality may be that the members of the commission are too sophisticated not to be influenced by other factors, even if they are not publicly referenced, otherwise they would say here, "Okay, Mr. Devolver, you're removing much stained glass, your application is rejected." This is a situation involving disparate elements, one element is longtime nearby residents, at prior meetings of the CB seven Preservation Committee, a woman spoke very poignantly about having her beloved views of the stained glass, which she had had for decades, taken away. Another resident, longtime resident, was concerned about noise from roof mechanical equipment. Others are concerned, understandably, about rising roof structures blocking their views. A second element is the residents moving into this converted church having enough light and air and space. A third element is the developer who's put a lot of money on the table. Then there's the church itself, it could be, if it could be personified, one might ask, "How do the ghosts of Carrer and Hastings feel about this?" There are other developed ideas currently being reviewed by the architectural firm, and other ideas from other sources, including architects in my own building, which deserve consideration and review and development. These ideas need to be explored because they might allay and protect the concerns of all the parties, especially the developer, whose values might actually increase, and the end result draw much architectural attention in the city. It's an indisputable fact that many ideas and objections from many sources over time have made the developers', architects' presentation just made better and different than it would otherwise have been. All that's needed then is a bit of a moratorium, I feel, a pause, to explore other ideas, perhaps sweepingly different ideas, explore them genuinely and sincerely, and take a break in time to do that. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Alex Herrera, and then Max Yeston.
Hello, Alex Herrera for the New York Landmarks Conservancy. New York's historic religious architecture is an integral part of the streetscape. These are places of great beauty that link New Yorkers to the city's history. Yet the ability of religious institutions to keep and maintain their buildings in the face of declining membership is a longstanding issue. As development pressure continues to increase, institutions face difficult decisions regarding their buildings. The Conservancy Sacred Sites Program sponsored a conference last year highlighting the challenges inherent in converting these properties to other uses. We're very familiar with these types of problems. Those challenges are clear in this proposal. The turn-of-the-century Carrer and Hastings Church exterior has a solid and austere beauty that will be changed to meet the requirements for its new use. While we regret some of these changes, given the reality of the situation, we support the proposal. The most visible changes, the insertion of many window openings and the roofed-up addition, are overall modest and respectful of the building's massing and proportions. The low addition does not overwhelm the base. On the east and south, the perforations reasonably extend the existing configuration. We do suggest some subtle modifications so the changes draw less attention. The six new vertical windows facing Central Park West could follow the same subdivided configuration as the existing windows, and stylistically appropriate grills could be inserted at the spaniel panel windows. At the west facade, the new entrance and window openings will not be seen easily from many angles on the street. At the north facade, we appreciate that the architects have endeavored to remove as little historic fabric as possible, while fulfilling mandates for residential use. This elevation will have the most substantial changes in the large number of new openings, but again, the visibility is limited. Regarding the stained glass, we cannot weigh on the removal of the windows attributed to Lafarge, as we do not have enough information, we appreciate that the border panels will be maintained. The project promises improvements in the restoration and repair of the facades and new clay tiles to match the originals at all roofs. We hope that some elements of the interior will be salvaged and reused to remind those using the building about its, its past. And we believe that in total, this is a sensitive adaptation that strives to maintain this landmark while enabling new and sustaining use. Thank you for this comment.
Thank you. Max Yeston, and after that, Jay Adolf.
Max Yeston, Landmark West. Our C of A committee cannot support this application as presented. While the commission does not have power to regulate use, as Charles Warren, co-author of the book Carrer and Hastings, architects point out, quote, "The LPC has a mandate to preserve the designated landmarks of our great city, and this mandate does not require the commission to permit changes merely to maximize the profit of those who speculate in the real estate market," unquote. The end result must be respectful to the existing building and not based on an optimum quarterly statement. With that in mind, we urge the LPC to reject the proposal unless the following conditions are met. The additional perforated windows planned for the two massive stone piers that flank the Central Park West facade's central bay must be eliminated, especially since their, their reason for being is currently unclear. To quote Warren again, quote, "The fact that these small windows are confined to the side elevation allows the entrance facade on the east to achieve a scale and monumentality that lends purity and power to the composition," unquote. This English mannerist-inspired church, excuse me, has clearly articulated separate masses by using solid blocky forms. Further puncturing the two stone piers disrupt the building's composition and makes the front facade look more like a nineteen-eighties postmodern design. The proposed bulkheads and increased height, again, to quote Warren, "are unnecessary as they will alter the building's profile and weaken its connection to ecclesiastical building traditions and the clarity of its Bozarts composition," unquote. While removing the excess pockmarked windows on the north facade was a small step, the proposed vertical curtain wall strips that attempt to mimic the pilasters on the Ninety-Sixth Street facade present a cold modernist intrusion which would be more appropriate for Lincoln Center than a Bozart church. These must be mitigated. Finally, when the owner, Joseph Brunner, purchased the building, he knew full well he was buying an individual landmark, which is, according to Robert A. M. Stern, quote, "one of the city's most compelling religious structures in the classical manner," unquote. Despite his desire to maximize profits for this building, we maintain that either the residential conversion must be more sensitive to the historic fabric, or a new use must be found. Reoccupancy by various congregations or cultural, performance arts, educational, and library research spaces, which typically mandate high ceilings and large interiors, demands far fewer changes to the exterior. The use should be adapted to the building's form, not the other way around, and I know you've already received copies of the letter, but I have a few.
So you know, I think there are a few letters.
Two? Oh, all right, so I'll give these then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jay Adolf. And then Susan Simon. And Susan Brody.
Yes, Jay Adolf, Community Board, Seventh Preservation Committee. You have our resolution, which is in the form of an approval with certainly strong recommendations. Just as a matter of process, I wanted to explain a couple of things. One is that we feel strongly that it is our charge to either disapprove something or approve it. In this particular case, this project presented something of a dilemma to us, and had many, many phases, many facets, and many nuances that we struggled with. As you, I think, are aware, at our initial committee meeting in November, we disapproved this project, and that disapproval was largely based on the proposed fenestration at the time. After our committee meeting, there were significant changes made. Our request, we, to, to delay this hearing and to give us a little more time to consider it, and consider it in our regular December meeting, didn't work out. So we, we did in fact have another committee meeting last week, immediately prior to our full board meeting, in which we reconsidered this project, and after extensive discussion, we approved, we, we sent you a resolution of approval with several strong recommendations. So I, I won't repeat those, and obviously, lots of the concerns have been echoed by other people who testified. I would make a couple of observations. Our preference, if we had our druggers, would have been to have a religious institution or a cultural institution or a community-based organization ride into this project as a white knight, buy the building, and restore it to it in its original form. That didn't happen, so like you, we're faced with a transaction that's occurred, and, and we don't have an inherent objection to the residential adaptive reuse, which we see as the only current viable way to preserve this important landmark. Let, let me focus on, on one item that's been mentioned by several other people, which is the stained glass windows. Some of us feel very strongly that those windows are very intrinsic to the identity of this building, and that every possible effort should be made to preserve those windows. I, I would observe a couple of things. On the north facade, what Misha has referred to as the monumental arched windows, the oval in the, in the medallions on the upper part of that windows now is opaque colored glass, so there's no, in those windows, there is no religious iconography.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Give me one more minute.
Uh, one more minute, just, if you can just wrap up.
Just, just that observation, that on the, on the south side, on the Ninety-Sixth Street side, we had suggested the possibility that just the ovals could be replaced, which would let in more light and remove the religious references, and on the stained glass window on the Central Park West side, we had, again, strongly recommended that there be some architectural solutions that would preserve those windows.
Thank you. Susan Simon, and then Susan Brody.
I'm Susan Simon. First Church of Christ Science, on completion in nineteen oh three, was written of by the Architectural Review, that the whole thing possesses a degree of force and power that is astonishing. The current plan to convert this church into eight floors of condominiums has elements so foreign and so inappropriate to the original architecture as to call into question the concept of the term "landmarking" itself. The worthy goal of bringing new life to iconic historic buildings is not a one-size-fits-all concept, nor is it one where the attempt places the developer's goals over the mission to protect the architectural integrity of the landmark itself. Yet today we are faced with a set of bad choices, ones which seek to force a solution at great cost, choices which include the removal of the intrinsic stained glass windows, the one above the entrance door attributed by this commission in nineteen seventy-four to John Lafarge, the others monumental in scale in muted and wondrous opalescent hues, crowned fittingly by angels. How could any serious preservation effort remove these windows any more than one could remove the entrance tower with its spire and four-sided lanterns? The plan for the north facade is a wrong solution. To place four separate multi-story window walls, cut from rusticated stone as if the building were concrete and steel, is an affront to the Bozart principle itself. First Church is defined by its concord granite so bold and uniform in quality as to give the impression that the hole must have been cut from one huge perfect block. The interruption of plunging vertical windows assaults the aesthetics created by the broad wall surfaces and dwarfs in scale the perfect framing of the stained glass windows. Much more appropriate remedies of atriums and roof-lined skylights have been suggested and must be reconsidered. The roof is punctured with graceless forms for modern penthouses and housings which will be clearly visible from both the park and the street. The clean, simple line of the copper-edged pediment roof will be lost. This iconic church, built as a public monument to some larger civic aspiration, requires change that is far less extreme and far more harmonious and appropriate to Carrer and Hastings' original vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Brody?
I have her statement, but she is not here.
Okay.
Shall I read it?
You can read it, yes.
The church building at three sixty-one Central Park West has towered over the northern corner of Ninety-Sixth Street and the park for a hundred and ten years. Carrer and Hastings' design for the First Christian Science Church was the result of the grandiose vision of the Reverend Augusta Stetson, chosen by Mary Baker Eby to establish an outpost in New York. Stetson's ambitions ran amok and lost her in leader, lost in her leadership position in the secret sect, but created an enduring legacy in stone and stained glass. Although the dazzling white granite has faded to a dingy gray over the years, it remains a grand if quirky Bozart monolith anchoring this corner of the Upper West Side. The earliest encroachment on the church's splendid isolation was the construction in nineteen seventeen of a Fred French-designed Tudor-style brick apartment. 1917 of a Fred French-designed Tudor-style brick apartment building just over the property line to the north. Peaceful coexistence was maintained by the inviolate surface of the church's north facade, punctuated only by stained glass windows which glowed when illuminated. With the recent sale of the building, a developer plans to convert the lofty space to luxury apartments, utilizing some very 1960s design solutions to maximize the square footage. The first proposal featured dozens of staccato windows peppering the building, especially the north facade, with dozens of prison cell-like openings that echo the frigid frontage of the 1967 RNA House at 150 West 96th Street. Stained glass windows deemed inappropriate religious would be removed and replaced by mostly clear glass. Unsurprisingly, this plan was greeted with horror. The revised proposal not only removes the magnificent stained glass windows, but on the north facade gouges out a series of vertical gashes to create a wall of glass more appropriate to Lincoln Center than to the apartment building, to an apartment building. This violates not only the aesthetic style but the introverted character of a building designed for a sect nearly as secretive as the Freemasons. One creative suggestion is to arrange apartments around a central atrium that would admit light and air from above. While adaptive reuse of the former First Church seems inevitable in this secular age, surely there is a more sensitive way to respect the aesthetics and the history of this landmark building.
Thank you. Louise Salazar, and then Antonia Rosello.
My name is Louise Salazar. I'm an architect, and I have lived at 370 Central Park West, the adjacent apartment house, for over 30 years. This church is a monumental edifice of great cultural significance and historical importance as the first church in New York City of a religious movement originated in America that has now expanded worldwide, designed by a justifiably prestigious architectural firm, Carrer and Hastings. At the turn of the 20th century, they and other notable American architects were masterfully manipulating the language of classical architecture, creating remarkable buildings which today are our precious architectural legacy that many appreciate and some seek to plunder. This church is, in my view, one of the jewels in the crown of notable Beaux-Arts structures in our city. It is not only a city landmark but a national treasure that should be preserved intact and committed to public use, in my view. Tragically, the interior may have been hollowed out in callous disregard for the integrity of the composition. What may be preserved is a facade, a shell gutted like a turkey, stuffed with condos that have nothing whatsoever to do with the exterior expression of the architecture. I ask, is this the best we can do? The proposed rooftop additions adversely alter the elegant proportional relationship of the tower and the massing of the main church. The enlargements, mechanical equipment, and bulkheads will be visible from the street and create noise. Their proximity to the adjacent buildings is very problematic. The proposed alterations to the north facade of the church are particularly invasive and out of character, inserting vertical sections of modern curtain wall into a rusticated ashlar stone wall, which violates and dissolves the solidity inherent in the original design. The authorship of the historic stained glass window in the east facade has been questioned in an effort to devalue it and to justify its removal. The economics of a design more compatible with the existing architecture might not make such a project as profitable. However, we are not here today to guarantee the developer the maximum return on his investment, rather to protect the integrity of a very significant work of architecture. The playbook for converting these historic structures under the benign mantle of adaptive reuse is well-known and has worked extremely well in this case so far. An ambitious developer buys a distressed landmark for a song, hires talented consultants and well-connected advisors to form a development team, begins planning and discussions with LPC at the staff level, and at the 11th hour announces his intentions with great fanfare and declares how his plan is the best hope for saving the structure. If only we, you, allow this to happen. I exhort the LPC to give this landmark time.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Your time's up. Thank you. Antonia? Antonia Rosello?
My name is Antonia Rosello. I'm an architect and principal of the firm Salazar Plus Rosello Architecture. I had the privilege early in my career to have outstanding mentors, historians and architects, like the late Norval White, author of AIA Guide to New York City, and the late Henry Hope Reed, founder of Classical America. Their passion for the history of this city and the importance of its rich architectural legacy and its classics should continue to inspire us all to aim for the highest standards as we make such vital decisions in the preservation of the architectural and cultural heritage of our city. There has not been enough time for any of us to even start to react to the proposed changes to this magnificent building designed by one of the most talented and prominent architectural firms in the history of our nation. This beautiful structure belongs to all of us. It is an essential cornerstone in the history of the millennial classical tradition brought to America by our ancestors in order to establish a firm foundation for all our young institutions. It is imperative for all of us as architects, preservationists, and builders to internalize the enormous responsibility entrusted in us as safe keepers of our architectural treasures, which by definition requires for us to consider not only the restoration of the physical but also the preservation of the intangibles for future generations. This structure was designed by Carrer and Hastings using the finest craftsmen of that time to create a space that would transport all who enter it into the realm of the spiritual through the creation of soaring intricate vaulted plaster ceilings, delicate stained glass, and many other beautiful details and works of art. Hastings expressed many times the importance of prioritizing the experience of the users before anything else in designing their buildings, thinking first about all the elements and details that would make the space memorable. We need, in New York City more than ever, to conserve our architectural gems and make sure that they remain accessible, to be admired and cherished by many future generations. We're a very resourceful city.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Sarah Westhoff. And then Tyber Sands. Sarah Westhoff here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Tyber Sands.
You guys too.
All right, Alistair Standing. And then Barbara Michaels.
Is there a possible CEB South elevation slide?
If you can do that, Misha.
My name's Alistair Standing, principal of Standing Architecture and president of the Board of Directors of 22 West 96th Street, the building opposite the church and the first landmark brownstone to the west. The two elevations of the landmark that are subject to the qualification of aesthetic appropriateness are, of course, east and south. Those are the two that receive the most consideration and attention by the original architect and perhaps the ones that should be treated with greatest reverence by the current designer for their proposal to be appropriate. They are no different from any notable neoclassical facades, using a powerful equal symmetry as a visual foundation for, in this case, tripartite compositions of delicately balanced proportions of solid and void. The lower proportion of the south elevation, for example, is a precisely balanced composition, three tall arched windows spanked by two bulky towers that add visual weight to the facade and in turn hold in place the spatial voids of the three windows. The references for this composition can be found in Nicholas Hawkesmore's Christchurch Fiddlefield, 1730, in London, but Carrer and Hastings have taken these ideas further by making the towers intentionally solid and only articulating recess, a recess panel in each. The symmetry is further expressed with an inscription in the panel to the east and balancing that with a delicately small window in the panel to the west. The resulting elevation is carefully balanced symmetrical neoclassical facade. The current presentation turns the west tower's panel into a large window. This singular move changes the composition entirely by removing the visual weight of the west tower and ultimately degrading significantly the symmetrical balance of the elevation. It does this to a point that the composition can no longer be considered truly neoclassical and is stylistically more akin to postmodernism. And all of this when there is an existing large window on the perpendicular wall of the same tower facing west, eliminating the need to add a large window. It is conceivable that the removal of the stained glass could be, for amongst other things, marketing reasons. The building was designed and landmarked as a Christian church, where the design referred to early Christian non-Catholic churches in England and New England. To assume that all of these references will be erased by the removal of the stained glass is unfortunate. If the ecclesiastical architecture is to remain via its landmark status, then so should the stained glass, which was also listed in LPC's designation report of 1974. It is because of these two intentions of the proposal that we think it does not yet reach the required standard of appropriateness to its landmark stature. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Michaels? Barbara Michaels here? All right, Tyler Donaldson?
Hello, my name is Tyler Donaldson. I'm representing the board of 12 West 96th Street, a co-op apartment building across the street from 361 Central Park West. Our building is recommending that the commission approve the adaptive reuse of the First Church of Christ Science building as it is represented here today. Resident shareholders of our building have met with the developers' representatives and reviewed the proposed plans, with the majority of those attending the meeting approving the proposed reuse. This recommendation was not made completely without hesitation or regret. We all wish that the building could survive and thrive as a home to a religious congregation, but we have watched as two congregations have struggled and ultimately failed to provide even the most basic maintenance that this building requires. No amount of wishful thinking is going to make this happen. The question that we grappled with is whether this proposal represents a serious and respectful proposal to maintain the significant features of this beautiful building, and we believe that it strikes a balance between the alterations necessary to make it viable and what should be preserved. The project team has been respectful to the community as well as to the building, reaching out to us, listening to us, and responding to our suggestions for improvement. We are pleased that the architects have researched the history of the building and in particular are proposing the restoration of lost materials and features. In too many cases, being designated a landmark has saved a religious structure from demolition only to see it sentenced to death by neglect. We as concerned neighbors are pleased to support a fresh beginning for the First Church of Christ Science. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Dolicer. And then Diana Hayward.
My name is Max Dolicer. I am a resident of 7 West 96th Street on the 17th floor. I would urge the commission to disapprove of this current plan for the following reasons. I have attended multiple meetings, and as it is right now, it looks to me that the Beaux-Arts character and personality and the structure of the building that is so much important to Carrer and Hastings will simply disappear. You obviously can somehow argue this, but this is my point of view. The thought itself that the stained window on the 96th Street of the church will disappear makes my skin crawl. I live on the 17th floor, and every day I go down to see this beauty, and it's very important for me that it will be there. Moreover, in many presentations that I attended, repeating references were made that there is no materials, no references were found by John Lafarge to those windows. However, it doesn't mean that those did not exist. The question, how extensive the search was and how objective the search was, and that's what I put in question. The next point is, I lived in this neighborhood since 1996. I basically think that the way it's been, what is proposed, simply doesn't fit the neighborhood character. It does not fit the neighborhood character. And I think also there are issues which obviously will be taken separately on standards and appeals in terms of the close proximity to the existing buildings. And last and not least, I'm also aware that the developer hired previously an architecture firm or another architecture firm was advising, which proposed a much less aggressive structure, which simply been declined by developer, and that at least is the information that I have. And that's pretty much it. So for all those reasons above, I would certainly urge the commission not to approve this project in its current form. And that's about it.
Thank you. Diana Hayward and Arlene Simon?
Good afternoon. My name is Skyhina Howard. I work in the Community Affairs Unit for the Borough President, and I'd like to read a statement on her behalf. Among other proposed alterations is a plan to remove the stained glass windows on the north, south, and east facade. Of major concern is a large stained glass window above the entrance door on Central Park West, which renowned artists John Lafarge admire. As noted in the LPC designation report of July 23, 1974, these stained glass windows are part of the beautiful and historic architectural detail which gives the building its special aesthetic value and great distinction. I agree that the stained glass windows are significant and ask that the commission reject the proposal as is to remove the stained glass windows. It is my understanding that LPC has previously granted the removal of religious iconography from historic buildings which were used conversion. If after thoughtful and careful consideration, the commission reaches the same conclusion, I would request that the stained glass windows remain with revised content being appropriate for the new use. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Simon, and then after that, Margaret Neuer.
Good afternoon. My name is Arlene Simon. I appear today on behalf of Landmark West in opposition to the application for a certificate of appropriateness to radically alter 1 West 96th Street, an individually designated landmark. Landmark West C of A Committee is a group of volunteer architects, preservationists, city planners, lawyers, and Westsiders that review each and every Upper West Side application that comes before the commissioners. Applicants and their architects make presentations to the committee. There are site visits, detailed plans, and drawing reviews, and the neighborhood is canvassed for their views, a thoroughly open process. On a separate tack, I would like to take this opportunity to formally advise the commissioners that as of January 1, 2015, Kate Wood will assume the role of president and CEO of Landmark West. I will continue as a non-executive chairman of the board, but Kate will run the show. At our 25th anniversary, Robert A.M. Stern had this to say. Landmark West is just at the beginning. The first 25 years are the teething years. The first twenty-five years are the teething years. Now we need early childhood and then go on to teenage and later stages. We need Landmark West. I can't say it more clearly. Preservation is a continuing saga. If Stern was right, and I believe firmly that he is, Kate will have her hands full. Compare Bob Stern's comment with that of a commissioner, then sitting but no longer, who complained of Landmark West as "the Taliban." In an email unearthed in a FOIL request in connection with one of the commission's most glaring failure, a public hearing put Edward Darrell Stones to Columbus Circle, "The Taliban's were not determined advocates, we are." Now, a personal note, after thirty years of appearing before the commission through the chairmanship of Kent Barwick, Jean Norman, David Todd, Lori Beckman, Jennifer Rab, Sherida Paulson, Robert Tierney, I think I'm qualified to offer substantive observation on the direction the commission is taking regarding the public participation and meaningful input to the commissioners' deliberations. The attempted decalendering of a hundred buildings at historic districts which had seen thousands of hours of staff research were calendered and heard by the commissioners over the years is but one example. The technique of holding a public hearing, commissioners taking no action, then referring the application to staff for revisions, then reconsidering the application without public participation at a public meeting is a shameless scam. The overall direction is clear: push down as much as you can, as far as you can from public view and comment, and even commissioner view and comment and decision-making. In any age otherwise characterized by transparency, public access...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. I'd like to finish, since it's my last hearing, so thank you so much.
You'll be given one minute more.
I'm sorry?
One minute more.
Over the last thirty years, I have been aware of the inevitable political aspect of the commission's work. It's not easy to stand up to Rev. Con Edison, the Archdiocese. Every mayor has his stamp on every chair's tenure. You must use your public director's stamp as well. I'm going to go to the end, but I'm going to pass my statement around so everybody can read it. And once you're gone from the commission and from this earth, your actions and failures to act here will endure forever. Make your service count in the long run. I thank you very much. And just as a reminder, I've been around now for thirty years, and some of you have been around for a long period of time, but I don't think there's anyone here that's been around for thirty years, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Margaret Neuer?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present. I'm speaking without a microphone. So my name is Margaret Neuer, and I live at seven West Ninety-Six Street on the sixteenth floor. First of all, I'd like to say I acknowledge the need to adapt this building to some other use, and residential use is probably, you know, the only realistic one. However, and I do appreciate the efforts made by the developer to preserve elements of the building. However, I think the proposal as it exists does violence to the historic and cultural integrity of this very fine Carrion Hastings masterpiece. First of all, many of the changes are attributed to the need to let more light into the new apartments, but that could be achieved also by lowering the density of the building. With fewer floors, apartments with higher ceilings, each one would get more light from the existing openings, and I think that should be considered. The roof changes are excessive, and they're quite visible from Ninety-Six Street. I think that the photos are a little bit misleading, because I'm not very tall, but when I stand and I look up, I see a lot of the changes with the mock-up that was done on the roof. And they can also be seen somewhat from CPW, but more from Ninety-Six Street. The vertical extension, although it's just under four feet, seems to benefit only two apartments, one of which, two penthouse apartments, one of which is a two-level, a multi-level due price. So that seems to be a change that's unnecessary for, you know, such little benefit to the new tenants. The bulkheads for the stairs and the elevators could be lower without an additional floor there, and the bulkheads and the screens for the mechanicals are extremely ugly. There's no other word for it. They are simply ugly, and they are fiercely antagonistic with the existing style of the building. Finally, I guess I'd just like to say that I hope that some of the eleven security cameras will be employed to capture images of cars speeding and vehicles to pedestrians, because it's a large number of security cameras. That's my statement. I've been asked to read a statement from another neighbor. May I do so?
Yes, very quickly.
Okay. This statement is from Dixie Martin, who also lives at seven West Ninety-Six Street. "I am not against conversion of the church noted. However, I am against the significant alteration that would be required by the developers' proposed number of apartments. That would make it financially rewarding for them. It far overreaches the limitations of this beautiful historical landmark exterior, and we in the city would be losing out to financial interests and frankly greed. As well, the developers have already proceeded doing work that is not up to the standards imposed. They do not engender trust of the public. We do not want to see this beautiful Bozart building deteriorate, but neither do we want it to undergo significant change, as has been proposed, still needing waivers that should be disallowed."
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Gabrielle Kamitenski? Does she want to speak? Okay. I think she submitted a statement in opposition. We have Zhiyu Mai Wang? He's also submitted a note in opposition. Paige Cowley? She submitted a letter. We will distribute it to the commissioners. And Community Board Seven submitted a recommendation. We heard from Community Board Seven already, but just to reiterate, they approved the application, but they had strong recommendations, and I know that Jay had identified what those were during his testimony. Right. Are there any other speakers on this item? Any other speakers? All right. If the development team would like to respond to these issues? Can we sort of frame maybe the answers that you'll give? For example, can we talk a little bit first about the stained glass windows and the practical issues, the philosophical issues? What exactly are you planning to do with them, and is it a possibility to incorporate them?
Sure. The first question is really with regards to the stained glass research, I think, to let us begin with that.
Okay.
Very thorough research was performed at the Mother Church in Boston. They are, they provide the archive for the former First Church of Christ Scientist, and so I spent several days going through about twenty linear feet of boxes of accounting books, ledger books, all of their contract documents, press clippings, drawings, and photographs. And I can say with certainty that the contract, which I have a copy of, between the church and Mr. James Cutrell, Charles Henry Cutrell, excuse me, who was the subcontractor for the interior decoration, and he was also to then provide a subcontract for stained and non-decorative windows. In the ledger books, we have reference to the decorative stained glass company, no reference to John LaFarge. Furthermore, the catalog resume for John LaFarge has no reference to this particular project, and furthermore, Mary Clerken Higgins, our stained glass consultant, provided this report, which I have a draft copy of, but that there is absolutely no reference to a professional connection between Carrion Hastings and John LaFarge either before or after nineteen oh three.
But they are the original windows on the church.
They are the original windows on the church. Second, with regards to Mr. Adolf's comments regarding the oval windows on the north elevation of the church with the three windows having the ovals be opaque, we can, I don't have a large image of this, but I can say very clearly that all of the stained glass windows have been maintained intact and protected during the asbestos remediation work, and that those three windows correspond with labels one, two, and three, and I'll just read what those are. One is Daniel in the Lion's Den, which is maintained. Two, the medallion of the child Jesus teaching in the temple. And three is a woman God crowned. So those windows are maintained as they are presently and are protected. With regards to the...
They'll remain, is that correct?
No, no, no. I'm saying presently, they remain. Mr. Adolf had suggested that they were opaque, and I just wanted to make very, very clear that they have not been removed, no opaque panels have been inserted, so they are there and protected during the asbestos remediation work. With regards to the philosophy of maintaining and reusing the foliated, non-religious stained glass elements, the plan for the careful retention and reuse of these, we've discussed it both with Mary Clerken Higgins and with Horace Bronze, our bronze window consultant, to carefully cut the stained glass borders, and as Richard Chronic mentioned as well, where there will be sort of irregular patterns at the bottoms of some of these windows, cutting those with a very careful effort and separating with a letting separation the stained glass element from the new IGUs. As we looked at previous relevant examples, and I brought the certificates of appropriateness for these previous actions from the commission, just a moment. Where the commission had previously approved the removal of religious stained glass windows, but allowed for the retention of non-religious stained glass windows, and all of those examples are in Brooklyn. One was the former Saint Peter's Church, and I'm sorry, I'm just not finding the pages. Do we want to speak to any other points?
Howard? I just think that we can answer these points, but I'd rather respond to the commission's comments. We spent a tremendous amount of effort and time detailing and restoring this building to, we think, its former glory, and there are compromises made in any adaptive reuse. We've tried to minimize them, and we believe that a residential use of this neighborhood is clearly the best use for this building and for the neighborhood as a whole, and it's an hazard bright use. We have revised our penetration plans twenty, thirty times, and we spent a great deal of time, most recently, answering some of the concerns directly made by the community. Our purpose here is to preserve this building. We are open to any suggestions as far as the religious stained glass, either be donated or whatever, and we've talked to, the Mother Church is not interested in having this glass, but we are open to any kind of donation or sale, anything that, and we want to act very responsibly on this matter. And I have to tell you, I just think we've, the height of the building is under four feet in extension. There are certain, the density of this building, and we're not sure exactly how many units because we have, our layout's going to depend upon the windows that are approved, but our guess is that no more than thirty units would be in this building, and there might even be less, and it's extraordinarily expensive restoration. So we're mindful of the fact that we do need a minimal number of units, and our units, by the way, the smallest size of our proposed units is about fourteen hundred square feet for a one-bedroom apartment, which is extraordinary. So these are very, very generous apartments. We've wanted great effort to make them large because frankly, we have window problems, and there are a number of large units in the building, and we, you know, from an economic point of view, we've dedicated a tremendous amount of effort to use the finest materials, replacement materials, and I think that the Saltzman firm and our architects, J K V, KB, have done a terrific job.
Okay.
We're here to answer questions.
Right. Are there questions for the applicant? Not from the audience, just amongst the commissioners?
Comments now, right?
Any questions right now? Okay. Why don't we go into comments? And first of all, I appreciate the challenge it is to adaptively reuse historic building and then individual landmark of just such amazing quality. To do that is incredibly difficult, and I think overall, I would say that the approach to this adaptive reuse is very sensitive. I just have certain concerns or certain areas where I think things could improve, and these are some of the things I think is worthwhile for perhaps the applicant to look at. I think there has been, I think, at least a sentiment, just hearing from people from outside, but also maybe some of the questions asked by the commissioners about the windows that face Central Park West. It is the most prominent visible frontage of the entire building, and I think, as Michael had pointed out, that it's very hard for us, I think as a commission, to approve the very limited, I think, punctures on the facade without really understanding what their need is. And so if you look at some of the floor plans, even if it's in flux, it seems some of them are in restrooms, which don't necessarily need a window, and some may be in rooms which have additional windows. And I understand, and I appreciate the challenge of getting as much light, but I think that, at least in my mind, I'm not sure I would feel comfortable compromising the facade along Ninety, sorry, on Central Park West. But I am curious to know what the other commissioners think about that. And I think the other issue I have is just a general comment that we've made often, which is about bulkheads and mechanicals and how much do you really need? And if you look at the floor plans, it seems like it's a lot, and there are ways to sort of diminish that as well. I think one other point, which I'm not, I can't say I'm completely convinced that you need to do this, but part of the program has, includes inserting floors, and I understand that you need a certain amount of density to make this plan work, but I think that a simple solution where you do not have the penthouse floor and incorporate it into the floor below would allow you to remove the windows along the hip roof, which seems very visible, and allow you to bring the height to what it is right now. And it's a loss of a certain amount of square footage, but I think it would address, these two recommendations, at least from my side, would, I think, address two very significant facades of the building. Yes?
First of all, I want to say that I think the testimony that we've heard today is among the most articulate that I've heard the whole, the time I've been a commissioner, which is now over six years. So I thank you all for it. Interesting for me to look out and hear friends and colleagues, in some cases, on both sides of this issue, and all of these people are ardent preservationists, so good people disagree. And the interesting thing is that I don't think I disagreed with any of the testimony. I agree with all of it on both sides, too, which is the whole dilemma that we face. I agree with all of it on both sides too, which is the whole dilemma that we face. And I think it's been faced almost from the beginning of this landmarks law. And it seems to be picking up speed perhaps now, as somebody mentioned, in this secular time or secular city. It's undeniable that the most difficult adaptive reuse imaginable, I think, is to take a church and convert it into residential units. And, and part of the reason is, a lot of the reason, of course, is the, are the windows. Not to mention the loss of the entire interior often, which we don't have control over in this case. By the way, I've been in this interior, I've been in this church, it's in a magnificent interior. But I don't think we're talking about landmarking the interior. So we have this magnificent dilemma of, do we wait longer and longer and longer for the right use, maybe to turn up that would be less detrimental to the adaptive reuse of the building? Or do we proceed now to arrest further degradation of the building through weather and time and move forward? So this is a real dilemma. And it's not a dilemma just for people around this table or for people in the audience, it's a dilemma for our city, I think. But nonetheless, it's, it's our role to, to come to a vote. So how do we do it? I'm interested too to hear other, other commissioners' thoughts. I share much of what the chair has just said. And I have a few thoughts. I agree with the point that she made about the front facade. The front facade, of course, this building really has two facades, you might say, because of the very important elevation, I would call it, I guess, on 96th Street as well. But the front facade is the, kind of the billboard of the building. So I think those six windows also are a bit of a problem. And I think given the lack of proof that it's necessary right now, that's a problem. The stained glass windows, which were recurrent as maybe the most popular thing to talk about, I don't know if this is just a completely goofy kind of thought, but rather than removing them, replacing the religious iconography in them and losing forever the integrity of those windows, that's, the assumption there is that people will choose not to live there, that the market is, is so thin with that, that people would choose not to live behind those windows. And I'm just wondering, maybe they would.
Yes.
And maybe we should wait for those individual purchases of the units to come forward and petition us to remove a window because they don't want it there, rather than assuming that nobody would, would take it and therefore we have to remove them all now. Just an unusual thought.
Yeah, I-
Yes. Yes, Adi?
Yeah, I, thanks Fred, that, that was really very clear. And just to continue with that, I mean, I think the point about the, the windows that are proposed on the Central Park West side and, and the problem that they pose is really connected very much, not to the fact that they haven't resolved yet what the interior use is going to be, but that the proposal to, and highlighted in their, in their interior section, which sews the, the horizontal eight slabs or nine slabs or however many, is, is an example of sort of the brutality of the banal. How, how is it that an interior that is so powerful and that's referenced, its volume is referenced in the exterior can be just made to, you know, can be so kind of erased by this horizontal approach? And it's exactly the approach that I'm questioning. I, I don't believe that there cannot be an adaptive reuse. I think there has to be an inventive one that wants to respect the entirety of this, of this edifice. And that that approach wouldn't start with these horizontal slabs. It would start with understanding the volumes in the building and maybe imagining the ways that its interior can be used, not as, you know, apartments, but as duplexes or triplexes or, or again, interior volumes that, that are in some sort of alignment and reference, again, the incredible power and, and dynamism of these, of these tall elevations. And, I mean, and, and that would, that connects and continues in reference to your point, Fred, about the stained glass. The, where we're at in the city is that the reason that you can imagine developing this property is because there's a desire to live in the city and in its, all of its character, which means that there would be an interest in, potentially an interest in living behind the stained glass and in living in non-conventional, unconventional spaces, which means that you can think about the interior of this building unconventionally and that way maybe, you know, retain some of its magic.
Other comments? Yes, John?
At the risk of wasting time repeating what others have said, the, the two facades that matter most to me are the street facades, obviously. And so I would reiterate on the sixth, of my concerns, I have, I had three, I would say they are the six windows on the Central Park West side. I think if you look at page 113, you can see how important the stained glass is to the, to this building. I can imagine a, even an individual landmark that had some stained glass that didn't have such a dramatic impact on the way a building looks. And I think this one is one where it does. And third, and I'm not sure I'm concerned about this, is those, is those, what are the skylights in the roof line, which I'm not sure you can actually see from anywhere. And I guess I'm less concerned about them if no one can see them. I'm not-
Right. If they're seen, even I, I would have less concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I can't tell-
The rendering showed them as being quite visible.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, my view is that if they, if they couldn't be seen, I'm, I'm less bothered by them. I, I really don't mind the, what's been done with the, with the highest level of the roof line. I, you know, the three and a half foot difference does, you know, it's fine, it doesn't really bother me. But I do think that from the, you know, when you look at those, what the people walking by are going to see and what we feel when we walk by this, this building on the, on the 96th Street side there, I think the stained glass windows are just the most dramatic impact the building has.
Right. And I think it's worthwhile for the applicant team to think about not maybe the examples where stained glass windows have been removed, but maybe where in fact you have churches and they've been incorporated into the new design. And I'm just thinking about one which I'm not sure the stained glass is there, but I thought it's still there, which is on, it's a small church, it's on, I think, Waverly or West Fourth Street. And it's been incorporated into the adaptive reuse of, of that, of the church to residential. But I think you're coming from that expertise and it's really worthwhile to look at that and see, in fact, how to incorporate it into the design and, and make it work. Yes, Michael?
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say I, I agree a thousand percent with what Adi was saying about the, the issue about the hori, the kind of horizontal approach. And I think that my read of it, and I might be wrong, but is that there's a process issue here. One must come before this commission, then must, then must, one must go before the BSA. And it was a process thing and you want to kind of try to get your approvals in a row. And I think part of the, one of the ways to solve this problem might be to have some kind of conference where BSA and LPC and other, and DOB might be able to sit down and talk about this building with some proposed designs that would help juggle the issues of light and air and ADA, other, you know, MDL, other codes that impinge on this very difficult building, to come up with a creative solution that might be more successful to the, for the client. Because it's, I mean, it's clearly he's like holding his place, I might need that because I might have a bathroom, because it might need light, light and air. But I think if you really worked on the whole thing together and did the kind of creative spaces that, that Adi was referring to, you could probably find interesting solutions that would both address some of the building code related issues and landmarks ones. I just wanted to note about the amazing ingenuity of the building, just as a parenthetical thing and as a Carrer and Hastings kind of signature in a way. Carrer and Hastings is famous for the public library, where you have this very august Beaux-Arts cladding of a very modern, interestingly programmed building. And here, in a funny way, you have the same thing. You have a building that is referencing a Baroque, high, high English kind of design where it's hiding a very New World, New Age, you know, religious program, where you have two volumes that are kind of nestled in this single, this building that's kind of both hiding and revealing it. In a way, that, for me, it gets to an issue that we can't really talk about, which is the interior. But what, I think that, I will say after having said that, that it's a darn shame that the applicant didn't take advantage of any of the interior, which is clearly being blasted out to the skin. And I think that's, that's a missed opportunity from a real estate point of view. You have charm by the ton that's going to be hauled out of here in dumpsters. And I think that it would, it would be a shame not to try to preserve some of that, not just the stained glass windows, but other aspects of it. And I think that-
If the audience can just, yes, if they can hold it happy, yes.
I think that that can be accomplished by looking at the density. And again, what, what Adi was saying and what you were saying, I think is completely correct. And if you were to eliminate the, the fifth floor and push the floors above it around, you might be able to both reduce the, the degree of visibility of the rooftop structure, maintain some aspects of the interior vault, which again, are not on our mandate to talk about, and, you know, get, improve your light and air situation as well. Another thing that was mentioned that I thought was an interesting option that could be considered is a courtyard, a central, a central court, which would eliminate all your need for, for increasing your light and air on the perimeter. And you certainly have room for it, obviously it would reduce the amount of floor area. I just wanted to mention it.
The only thing I would say is that I, that I think it is important for the commission to also sort of recognize its jurisdiction when we look at these things. And I think it is a bit of a slippery slope if the interior was landmarked, I think, speaking to that, you know, some of you may not agree with me on this. But I think when we, when we see adaptive reuse projects, very often it is about changing the interior because the interior suits a program of a particular use. And when one is trying to adapt it to another use, its interiors are bound to change. And I think that is a practical matter of adaptive reuse. I think the other thing is that for us, we, yes, we could work with different agencies and try and put a courtyard in it, but I think the question for us is really whether the proposal that they're working on is appropriate. And I think if, I don't know whether it's our, whether we should be engaging in the solution of a courtyard versus something else to get their light and air. If we have concerns about the way this building has, is being adaptably reused, which takes away the historic fabric in a way that we feel uncomfortable with, then we should tell them that we don't want them to do that. And so if we feel, the sort of three things I can sort of think of, off the top of my head is that if it's, you know, if it's the stained glass is really important, given the fact that in other situations, it may have not be, but we as a commission feels that that, in this context, is absolutely essential to retain, then I think we should ask them to retain it. Similarly, if we feel that the punctures are not appropriate, we should say that. And in terms of the roof and whether it moves up by, you know, three, three and a half feet, how critical that is for, for us to come to the conclusion that this is, is appropriate is, then we should give them direction on that. If that is what we're telling them, then I think their task is to see how to work out the interiors to achieve that for us.
A hundred percent agree. And I, I will, I will try to phrase, phrase what I continue to say in that, in that light. On, another, I think, things that we, that we haven't talked about, that I, that struck me as an unfortunate move relative to the appropriateness of the proposed design, is the change of the main entrance of the building to the, to the back and the taking of the main entrance and making it basically into somebody's window. I, I think, I think that, looking at the plan again, I think there are plenty of ways where one could preserve the entrance as an entrance to the building. I think that taking the entrance away from the entrance makes it all the more of a facadist kind of approach where you're keeping the shell, but you're stripping away every single shred of, of the utility or kind of functional quality of the building. I would, I would ask them to explore the possibility of restoring the front doors as, as doors of some kind that are used as doors. The com-
I think they've got their core at the rear and so-
Right.
So the question isn't whether this should be the main entrance to the lobby of the building, but just used as an entrance.
Again, one could envision flipping the apart, the studio apartment that is taking advantage of that window at the front that was the front door to the back and having the studio apartment at the front as their lobby with a corridor to the back. It wouldn't change their core location at all. It would, it would, it would result in a slightly less efficient perhaps use of their floor plate. But I'm not talking about their interior layout, I'm just talking about the appropriateness of the outside.
Right. No, I understand that. But I can understand the reason to, and, and for me, maybe it's not that much of a concern that the front door, this is going to become a residential building, it is not a church. I think we have to understand that. And so I, to, I'm not, I don't feel, for me to make, to make, to make this building appropriate, you need to maintain the front door on Central Park West, but also be the main lobby into the building. I don't think that's necessary.
I think it could be the front door to a unit too. I mean, I think just taking it, making, you know, taking the function of the front door away completely and making it into somebody's living room window, I think is unnecessarily modifying the initial intent of the architect of the individual landmark. If there is a functional way around it, I think that should, could be explored.
Right. But I think, and you know, as a commission, we are going to see more and more applications like this. I think Fred said that this is something that we may see again and again. And I think that for these build, for the preservation of these buildings in the long run and where they're not being neglected and they're not left to the wayside, I think we as a commission should be flexible on it. And we should find ways to save these buildings. And a part of saving these buildings is to recognize that they are going to be some functional usage changes that are, that cannot be avoided in some ways. So I would just say that the, the level of importance or significance that we give to some of these interventions or should be looked at in that context. Other comments? Roberta?
Okay. I do agree with the briefings that you laid out as the main, what I consider problems, being the visibility of the roof. And it seems that there is a lot happening on the roof and, and even the part, the part that you don't see so well from the street, it seems. I just wonder in terms of the height of the elevator and the stair bulkhead and all of those things, just because the building is an individual landmark and because the roof line to me is important, is an important part of that, that, that bulkiness and that distribution should be looked at and that thing should be as low as possible and not there as possible. And I agree also with the, the suggestion that the, the skylight, the, the raising of the skylights be looked at and, and if possible to not do that, to do that. Right. In terms of the stained glass, I also agree, of course, that the stained glass windows should remain where possible, if possible. And I think that it is possible. And it reminds me that we did see some, some time ago, at least I saw, a presentation of a proposal where there were some large windows and the way that they kept those windows was that they pulled the, the floor back from the window. So they did have a, a floor in between, but it, it was a duplex or it was something that could be opened so that you can share the use of the window and you don't have to- could be open so that you can share the use of the window and you don't have to go to the, you don't have to go to the edge of the window, which means you have to destroy it to gain your extra floor. You can gain, if it were a duplex or something. Anyway, I think that there are ways, and I guess I would just suggest that they look at them. And I agree with other commissioners that the puncturing of the front facade is something that really destroys the composition of that entrance as we know it. And I think that that's, although I accept that they can do punctures in other places.
Okay. Other comments? Yes, Dana?
Yeah, I also think that the front facade should not have additional windows. That's the most sensitive facade at all, of all. That, I think that probably they should not have that additional penthouse floor, and because I feel that particularly that the skylights are very, very much of a problem on the, one of the, I'll call it a primary facade, more primary facades. They might be able to achieve, certainly they could achieve light into that space by the, some configuration of what the windows are currently on the, you know, upper story there, changing it. And also there's one of the back facades, you could have skylights as they do in part of the back facade, and that might be a way to accomplish at least visibility into that large space that they're looking for. The stained glass, I feel that it's important to try to preserve some of it, but I do not think that we should be insisting on preserving the religious stained glass and that you could have some use of stained glass in areas that are on the primary facades that are to give a sense of that original without having to preserve the religious icons, which I think, you know, and sometimes are a problem for, you know, prospective tenants, and I don't, I don't think we should be imposing that, is my view.
And I, actually, I just wanted to comment that I do think that that does raise certain concerns of retaining religious iconography within and requiring that within apartments, even though apartments, people may choose and be happy to live there, but others may not feel comfortable. So I think from that perspective, it does, it does raise a legitimate concern.
I think there's also an issue with the windows. I don't think the issue is necessarily the iconography as much as the fact that the glass doesn't appear to be transparent. I mean, I think even the field glass is milky. It looks like in photos anyway, which you could, you'd have to change it. But, you know, if you have light and air, you could do with...
It's an option, too.
Maybe that's what they're going to be a safe...
Maybe that's what they're going to be a safe word, too.
But the intent is that it's going to remain sort of translucent, is that correct?
I imagine that they're going to make clear of the new ones, but the existing ones, I think, are just more problematic as conventional windows in your apartment because they're not transparent.
All right, yes.
Yeah, stained glass, it's been tough in my 20 years. It's tough to maintain stained glass, but there have been some ingenious ways. But other than that, I think this has been a very good afternoon. I think we saw an excellent presentation. I think we heard excellent testimony. I think we've got some excellent opinions around the table, and I think the applicant now can go back to the drawing board and do a better job.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just a suggestion. I think you could put windows, in my opinion, behind the columns, to the left and right of it, to the left, you know, to the outbound side of the columns. You wouldn't really see them, they'd be in the shadows. You needed ventilation on that west-facing or east-facing stuff.
All right. Everybody hear that suggestion? And is that, any concerns about that? So it's not on the facade, it's actually in the, where they have the indent?
If you look at the plan, there's room there for the windows of the exact same size that they're showing, just...
It just faces into the interior.
They'd be in the shadows behind the columns.
Yeah, if you look at page 430, you can see it there.
There's pretty much a slot.
You'd see them.
You'd see them.
You'll see them. You'll see them. They'll be in a location which historically hasn't had no windows as opposed to the ones that they have.
I don't have any.
All right. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. So the applicants, you know, I think you're aware of, if you want me to sum up these three areas, but you know it, right? Okay. All right. I think it's been said like several times, and we'll see you when you get back, then. Okay. Thank you. We'll close the hearing.